Attention. Everybody take your seats, be quiet please. zoning Board of Appeals for March 19th, 2019 will now come to order, please call the roll.
Mr. McQuarrie?
Present.
Mr. and Mrs. John Carwax, Carwax?
Present.
Mr. Wood?
Present.
Mr. Cole?
Present.
Mrs. Curly?
Present.
Mr. Anderson?
Present.
Mr. Wood?
Present.
Do we have a motion or accept the minutes from the last meeting?
So moved. Second. Made by Mr. Wood, seconded by the Chair. Ayes?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
The first case this evening will be case number 9861, 13 Park Street, continued case. Okay, permit the use of a pre-existing non-conforming two-family residence in the Business District, B D 3, on a lot with 7,292 square feet and 66 feet of frontage as a two-family dwelling, finding such use is not substantially more detrimental in its effects on the neighborhood.
Mr. Chairman, I'm Attorney Sam Vitale, and Agnes Santos here with me. As your agenda indicated, we were here before the Board was gracious enough to allow us a continuance to address some of the issues that have been matter of concern, and I think I submitted to Mary the result of an inspection done by the Housing Authority and Roger Ennis as to what work was needed. The work is beginning on Thursday on replacing the front porch. We're chipping away at what the Housing Authority's requirements are for the approval of the loans, like one outstanding issue that relates to an old credit matter, and so I think that we have addressed the concerns that were expressed, and I would hope that you had the list that the Building Inspector and the Housing Authority came up with with respect to the items that they felt should be addressed. I think the one difference is that they had a concern, there's some work replacing hardwood floors that a homeowner can do, but one of the things that they came up with was that they thought that there should be two boilers, two new heat, heating elements, and as to that, it's going to require a lot of people who are licensed to do that kind of work. But the Chief Building Inspector, Mr. Ennis, and Mr. Warner from the Housing Authority worked together, they came up with a list, I think the list is with your records, if not, I can provide copies, and as I indicated, notwithstanding the Board's actions that I presented maybe three meetings ago, an estimate to do the porch, and then I think a meeting or two ago, I indicated how they would secure the funding to do that, they have that funding, and as I understand, Agnes' husband, that work begins on Thursday to replace the front porch. But the rest of the work will proceed in alignment with what the Housing Authority inspector indicated and what the City's Chief Building Inspector indicated. And so I think with that kind of work, the property is markedly improved, it works as a two-family, and I would ask the Board then to favorably consider the request.
Can your client tell this Board that if this were to be granted, the for-sale side would go up?
The for-sale side?
The sale side.
They've lived there since 2005.
I know that.
Right? And they have five children that live there with them.
I'm just asking a question.
No, I think the real, if you said to me, is there going to be a for-rent side going up, yeah, on the first floor, if they could ever get it approved as a two-family?
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah.
But nobody answered my question.
For these people, and if you, and I don't want to cause anybody embarrassment, but there's a letter in there from the Housing Authority, person who does the loans, in which they, they talk about some of the issues that have confronted these people as a challenge that relate to the title, and let me just say to you that they survived to continue to maintain the property and pay the mortgage.
No, no, I understand that, that was a one-hundred dollar credit.
So I would, I'd say I think they're committed to the property, given their long time of living at the property, the endeavor that they've begun in terms of how to refurbish it and working hand-in-hand with both people from the Housing Authority and the City Inspection Services Department, and so there's no misunderstanding about, A, what had to be done and what won't be done.
So Sam, my major concern is that we're here today on the 19th, and still they haven't submitted all the paperwork on the loan. So everybody's followed through, you got the City, we got the Housing Authority, everybody's gone out there, gave them a list of contractors, and they quite frankly haven't submitted the documentation for the loan.
There's only, again, without-
No, there's a lot missing.
Well, I-
That's my understanding, there's a lot missing.
Well, I have an email that addressed, I think, the question, and it related to a medical bill that's on a credit report from a few years ago for like $225, if they could evidence that that was resolved, that was one of the remaining issues for the Housing Authority, and that was an email that came from the Housing Authority. So I'd say to you that, that's not like, unlike many people who find out when they go to get a loan application, that some credit reporting company has indicated that there's an outstanding bill, but, I mean, you know, my advice to people is, go pay the $225, it's better than that.
Yeah, I agree, that was it, is mine, they can't process the loan because they haven't received the documentation, we've given them a month and a half.
In case, if I don't get it?
Let me, then I'll read you, I'll read you what it says, okay? One thing is within the, okay, but I think I provided this, maybe I didn't because I thought it was personal to them, but you have any problem if I read that to them? The credit report indicates that you have an outstanding medical bill of $325, the bill will have to be paid in full, or payment, this is from the Housing Authority, that's an issue, okay? And then, everybody over 18 years old's got to sign a release, because there's a couple of older children, does the property still have the mortgage, they couldn't find a mortgage discharge, that's like anybody who goes to get a refinance and they say, what happened to that mortgage discharge, and they go back and they say, oh, the mortgage was paid, and they get it. But that's the list I've got.
One group of the P. Stubs, or the Three-Mark Bank account.
Those are things that are within their control, okay, that they got asked for on the 7th of March, but I don't see any of these as being insurmountable, and the better for answer is, they've got secured funds, they have funds to begin the work.
So you're saying, without the loan-
From the savings account.
Without the loan, you're going to give the door taken?
They had, I think we discussed, the porch was $6,000, how they had the $6,000 to do it, that permits got pulled, the work begins, and it's, that's paid. What we're talking about is this other list that came above from the inspector.
Boiler, boiler.
Right, and the boiler is a substantial expenditure.
Separating the utilities is, yeah, it's very doable, but we gotta, I just want to make sure it's going to get done.
Well, to give you an indication of why I think these people's commitment is, okay, the funds they're talking about are using for money that they have in their IRA, so, and they have sufficient amount of funds, I would say, to do this work. I'd be glad to share this with you, but-
Are there any other questions on the Board?
No.
It seems that there are none, what is the wish of the Board? Mary, who's on this?
Mr. Wood and Mr. McQuarrie.
Firstly, we'd like to give them some more time to complete their application, but that's, that's how I feel about it. Either that, or we've got to withdraw and come back when they, when they've done it, but best thing would be, I think, just to keep it up and to make sure that they, they follow through with their commitment. Like I said, everybody else is on their job. The City went out there, Housing Authority went out there, gave them a list, gave them contractors to call, it's a very doable project, but it's going to take some money, the boilers, splitting up the utilities are the big things, maybe some roof work, chimney work, things like that.
Yeah, I thought I submitted the list that they got.
Well, like I said, you know, we give somebody commission to go from a one to a two, we're adding $80,000 worth of value to the house. We want to make sure the work gets done. I got no problem with doing it, but I want to make sure the work gets done.
Well-
I don't feel that, I think they can work a little bit quicker on submitting the documents, that's just me.
Well, they have, porch is going to be replaced, starting-
That's the least of the concerns, though.
But that's $6,000?
We've been hearing about the, that's the very least of what needs to be done to convert, oh, one to a two, is the front porch. There's, the walls are going to be built, but, you know.
I mean, what month are we in here, I mean, what-
Oh, I signed the waiver long ago, in terms of the time, but-
But I have enough to cover, even I don't get the loan, I have enough to cover. I went to-
I mean, we're talking-
This is from my savings.
So why haven't you moved forward with that, then?
$30,000?
Why are you chasing the loan if you have enough money to do it?
Well, I just went and-
Many people borrow funds-
I'm asking, I just asked a simple question, she's, she's sitting here explaining to us that even if she doesn't get the loan, she has the money to do it.
If she takes-
Why not just take the money and do it?
Because then it will take your IRA.
Yeah, well, it sounds like she's wanting to take her IRA anyway.
If I don't get it, so, I'll do it, because I have enough to cover, that they tell me I can take it anytime, this is my retirement money, so if I can get the loan, fine, if I don't get the loan, I'll use it, because I have to wait for approval before we can do anything, so we're going to start next Tuesday with the porch, and we just got, the inspector came Thursday.
Mr. Chairman, can we give them another month?
Mr. Cole made that motion, if you want to second it, we can, we can call that roll.
I'll second the motion.
Yep, so the motion made by Mr. Cole, seconded by, what is the, what is the, call the roll, sorry.
The motion is to give them another month?
Continue for another month.
Hopefully secure the loan.
Then you have a decision, well, to give you pursuit of the loan, or just use your IRA?
Either, yeah.
Next meeting, I think-
I will not, I will not vote again to continue at next meeting, I'll tell you that right now.
Yeah, it's mine, it's on my, it's on my account.
You make that decision by the time you come back for the next, so I think this is-
The money's on my account.
Well, we don't want you to take your retirement account.
So we're going to continue until April 2nd?
What, is it, we have another meeting in April?
April 2nd, and we also have one, yes, April 16th.
Why don't we do the April 16th?
April 16th.
To be fair.
Thank you.
Mr. McQuarrie?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Curly?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Yes, continue until April 16th.
The next case this evening will be case number 986864, Love is Lee Bath. This is a, motion, there was a motion to reconsider by the Chair. Can we, is there a second to reconsider this?
Second.
Motion made by the Chair, seconded by Mr. Wood. Can you call the roll for reconsideration? Sorry, I didn't think, I didn't see her up there.
Mr. Wood?
Yes, to reconsider.
Mrs. Curly?
Yes.
And Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Yes, continue until April 16th.
The next case this evening will be case number 986864, Love is Lee Bath. This is a, motion, there was a motion to reconsider by the Chair. Can we, is there a second to reconsider this?
Second.
Motion made by the Chair, seconded by Mr. Wood. Can you call the roll for reconsideration? Sorry, I didn't think, I didn't see her up there.
Mr. Wood?
Yes, to reconsider.
Mrs. Curly?
Yes.
And Mr. Johnson?
Yes, to reconsider. It's my understanding, okay, you let them withdraw without prejudice?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, my name's Dan Cahill, I live at 20 Baylor Avenue. This is my client.
Robert Randall, I live at 39 Preston Street, Lynn, Mass.
And thank you very much to the Board for allowing us to have this matter reconsidered, we understand that there's some concerns still, so at this point, Mr. Chairman, we would like to request the Board accept our withdrawal of his application, but this time without prejudice.
Chair will make a motion to withdraw without prejudice?
Second.
She made it seconded, call the roll.
Who's second? You don't have a key, so, it's one of us.
Who's on it? I thought you were on it. Mr. Wood's on it?
Right.
No, I see, I get it.
Mr. Wood?
Yes, to withdraw without prejudice.
Mr. Wood?
Yes, to withdraw.
Mr. Cole?
Yes, to withdraw.
Mrs. Curly?
And that's just going to happen, just like the last time it was withdrawn, and you're still telling us a three-family, that was going to happen now.
I believe the matter, this-
Just a question.
-house is slated to be sold.
I'm sorry?
This house is on the market to be sold, so there should be a new owner at some point. If there were such an encumbrance upon a new owner being able to seek a variance for two years, that's something that would most likely have to be disclosed to the buyer. We're trying to avoid a lot.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next case, it's case number 9871, 28 Baltimore Street. Okay. You're welcome. We need to read this again, it's continued, right? Okay. Allow the operation of existing non-conforming lot of an existing two-family non-conforming building into six, into a six-unit residential building exceeding the maximum two-and-a-half story requirement into a law requirement, into a law requirement off-street parking spaces. Do not meet the desired requirement of the parking aisle dimensions, rear and side setbacks, and further to allow residents to back out onto a public way in an R2 district. Now, you guys were here last month, and I believe there was quite a bit of neighborhood people here, and you guys had retreated to get together and discuss this and come up with something that maybe made more sense to the whole neighborhood, so-
Yes, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Dan Cahill of 20 Baylor Avenue, Lynn, Mass.
My name is Julio Quezada, 27 Allison Way, Lynn.
And I want to thank you very much for the opportunity to come before the Board again, and I actually want to thank a lot of the neighbors that are here as well. There was community meeting on March 19th that yielded some, some really fruitful and beneficial suggestions to the plans that we initially had proposed back in January to the Board, and if your permission, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pass out some additional updates to, and I'll go through exactly what these updates are with the new picture that we have, that the group didn't see, but there was a member of the Board who thought that there was a house in the hunt that looked pretty good, because it was a sideways house, and this house, Tulio purchases very early, from the front, and the goal is to improve that facade from the front of the, from the front of the housing, house. You may find that there are some changes structurally to this proposal. Tulio, in meeting with the neighbors, had agreed to a number of significant changes, one being that the, it was a removal of a living room and dining room, a family room and a dining room space in the new addition, that yielded an additional eight to 10 feet of space that was removed from the building structure itself. That allowed for an additional parking space, so we were not, we are not in front of this Board for the parking variance for the number of spots required, because we have the necessary nine spots, but we were able to manage to create a 10-spot to alleviate some of the concerns of the parking area, and the church, it causes a lot of traffic problems for folks on the weekends, so we wanted to alleviate that, not only for the neighborhood, but also for, for the tenants, the owners of these condominiums. We have some new plans as well, based on some suggestions from Board members and from members of the community, there was a desire to make this building look more like the neighborhood itself, so Tulio and Julia, who works with, Julia Lowell, who's the realtor, who's been working with Tulio to purchase this property, went around the neighborhood, they were down on Ocean Street, Breed Street, Curry Row, Deer Cove, and they found some, what they feel is, though, they found some more aesthetically pleasing designs for the neighborhood with respect to the exterior as well. Do you have an exterior picture, right there? Here. So if you can see, and some of you may not have been here for the first time, there's some additional gables here, they reconfigured the entrance and exits to be on the side of the building instead of the rear of the building, and again, that freed up an extra additional parking space, they have some additional, what's it called, floss molding, floss molding?
Dental molding.
Dental molding? Sorry.
Floss, is that it?
Well, I mean, it looks like floss. It looks like floss, I mean.
So Mr. Cahill?
Yes.
You said she has eight overall feet out of length of the building, is that what you said?
Yes. So there's also concerns from some of the neighbors about sun exposure in the back, so we-
Fencing, lots of-
Oh, yeah, we'll get to the fencing too, there's going to be, there's going to be some significant fencing, so we short the footprint to be virtually exactly where there's an existing two-story structure that is going to be torn down, but right where that about ends is where this building will end as well. There was also concerns about privacy and fencing, and Tulio's agreed to install any size fencing that the neighbor, the budding neighbor or neighbors desire. Folks who live in Ocean View, Ocean Terrace were requesting eight-foot fences in the rear with some vegetative barriers as well, some were looking for 12 to 15-foot vents, and actually, it already exists, and it's shown from three, Autobahn Park, the current fencing on the side is about 12 to 15 feet, currently.
Correct.
So they would be mirroring that, and if anyone else was interested in that type of size fencing or vegetative barriers, Tulio would be amenable to that. Two bedrooms, they're just about 1,000 square feet, so they're smaller than what was proposed before, so we feel that that would lend itself to professionals, you know, couples or single folks, unlikely to attract families because of the size of the bedrooms and the size of the units itself. They've been condominiums, there were concerns about these turning into rentals, we've agreed to, to what the extent of the law allows for condo docs to try to preserve this as a condo owner-occupied development. There'll be a Homeowners Association established, there'll be removal of such things as trash, and there'll be removal of snow, and we really feel that this is something that, in the end, satisfies housing needs in this general area without bringing some of the additional needs with our, with our school systems, and also something that we try to fit in the neighborhood, the Chase Estates, I know that Tulio spent some time in the Chase Estates to try to see some of their architectural, what they've done architecturally and with their space, and again, these renderings, I think, are a better reflection of the proposal than the last one, the roof line will stay the same as it is today, and again, the front facade would hopefully look more jazzed up, which would include, if you're looking at Baltimore property from Baltimore Street, it's very bland, what we propose is on the, above the first-floor windows, kind of a roof, two-foot, three-foot kind of roof line to break it up, and then also maybe some stone on the front, like it looks like less of a sideways house, put some shrubbery as well. As far as water and drainage is concerned, there's, there were some neighbors on Ocean View Terrace about runoff, and also with the neighbors on Audubon about some displacement of water, we'll work with water and sewer to make sure that there is no negative impacts, and in fact, hopefully an improvement to the area with respect to water and sewer impacts and water runoff.
How are you going to commit it to that?
Through the modern miracles of engineering. So currently-
We don't see any site plan right now.
So we won't, so this, we would, so this, this project triggers site plan review, and would trigger a go-to water and sewer. However, that investment's not typically made at this level, because it's a significant investment, and one that will be required, and approval will be required by the other Boards, but to do that at this level, where the variance is very much in the air-
What was the part of the application to the site plan?
There is, they have, they do have a site plan, it's actually-
We have a-
This page right here.
That's what you require.
Mr. Cahill's not wrong, it does have to go through site plan review, it has to go through, you know, they have to, they have to fall under all the constraints of, you know, ISD and all that other stuff, so, you gotta, you gotta kind of, you know-
It's a multi-step process that we have to go through.
Keep the, keep the focus on what, what they're here for, it's more so the setbacks and the, the overall size and the-
We did extend the setbacks in the back, we were asking for a variance because of the, on the parking area, we need a five-foot barrier between the properties, we've extended, we initially came in with a two-foot buffer, we've extended that to three on the sides, and then the rear to four feet, so we're shy two on the sides and shy one foot in the back, and that will allow us to do the vegetative barriers that we think that will-
When all of this lawn, you show here, belongs to Rick's house.
That's Rick Borton's house, so the engineers, to get a clearer look at the, at the actual development itself, had they put a house there, you wouldn't be able to see the actual-
No, that's to make this look better, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, yes, oh, yes, no, no, we certainly wouldn't make it look ugly. But this house, I mean-
See, this is what you're saying, what did they belong to?
So that would be, my guess is we'd work with the neighbor on the other side too, Rick, and I know Rick's just sold his house, I talked to him last night, he's very excited about that, although he has apparently no place to move, so if anyone has an apartment, correct? Rick is looking.
We'll try to figure out how close these cars were to this property line.
It'll be three feet, three feet away. Initially, we'd ask for two, it'll be three.
How high is the real one?
Same height as the one that's-
33 feet.
That's what the paperwork says, it's the same height as the building that's standing out.
Yeah, it's the same height as the building that it currently exists, so they're not, they're not extending the height of the, the line at all.
33 feet.
33 feet.
Yeah, that's 33 to the top, the midline, I believe, is-
27.
27. So we, that did not trigger the need for a variance for the height of the building, because that would be 35 feet or above.
Any other questions from the Board?
And I think you'll find that Tulio's very open to suggestions, he was very open to a lot of the suggestions made by the neighbors, and that will continue going forward, he wants to make something that the neighborhood is acceptable with. He lives in the city, and he gets to go to public schools here in the city, and he's not interested in, in building anything that's detrimental to his own community, in my opinion.
It does say, with the building exceeding the maximum two-and-a-half story requirement.
Yes, so-
That's why I asked.
So currently, in order for that third floor, that's currently there, the attic space, in order for it to count as a story, it needs to be 6.5 feet, and because it currently is not 6.5 feet, we need the variance to allow it to do the eaves out, or the gables, or the eaves.
Dormers?
Dormers, sorry, I'm learning a lot about construction. I can do varianceing, but construction's a little bit different for me, and that's why it appears, it's basically you're fanning out the roof line.
Yeah, we load the beach of the roof.
Tulio does not work on Sundays or Saturdays, those are days that he spends with his family and his church, and the neighbors have been made aware of that as well, that there's unlikely to be any significant kind of construction on these grounds.
Any other questions on the Board? Shouldn't there be none, I'm going to open the floor now for other people, I'm sorry, for people in favor of this petition. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this petition?
Leave it there.
Anybody else in favor, seeing that they're none, I'm going to close the hearing for those in favor of the petition. I'm not going to open the floor for anybody in opposition. Is there anybody out there in opposition to this petition? Step up, give your name, and what's going on?
I'm in Anthony Hyde, I live on 12 Ocean View Terrace, so I'm within 150, 160 feet of that parking line, even though I wasn't on the list, within 300 feet, my neighbor Wendy was also within 300, she's not on that list, but, so, I appreciate everything they've done, everything looks great, and I know it must look nice, for me, I have to be against it, because for the, it's not the benefit of Ocean View Terrace, there's way too many people that are being jammed in there, drainage is an issue, we're, it's a private way, so we don't have sewers here, and it's already floods in the back, there is a sewer, but it goes down to no pipes, so, basically, anything that goes on that terrace is out of our pocket, because we just had to shell a lot of money a year or two ago for water running, because the City won't help us. So I just stand up here, I don't want something to happen down the line where I'm kicking myself if I proved it. The dumpster is a big concern for me, that's going to be about 150 feet from my property, and right next to Bruce's house, and how I look at it is, there's going to be a minimum of 12 people in there, maybe 15, 18, so, lot of trash, and I'm thinking seagulls, rats, my, so I'm thinking worst-case scenarios, but when, once that's built, I can't do anything. Is there anybody out there in opposition to this petition? Step up, give your name and what's going on.
My ex-anty-hyde, I live on 12 Ocean View Terrace, so I'm within 150, 160 feet of that parking line, even though I wasn't on the list within 300 feet. My neighbor Wendy was also within 300, she's not on that list. So I appreciate everything they've done, everything looks great and I know it must make it look nice. For me, I have to be against it because for the, it's not the benefit of Ocean View Terrace. There's way too many people that are being jammed in there. Drainage is an issue. We're, it's a private way, so we don't have sewers here and it's already floods in the back. There is a sewer, but it goes down to no pipes. So basically, anything that goes on that terrace is out of our pocket because we just had to shell a lot of money a year or two ago for water running because the city won't help us. So I just stand up here, I don't want something to happen down the line where I'm kicking myself if I proved it. The dumpster is a big concern for me. That's gonna be about 150 feet from my property and right next to Bruce's house. And how I look at it is there's gonna be a minimum of 12 people in there, maybe 15, 18. So a lot of trash and I'm thinking seagulls, rats. So I'm thinking worst-case scenarios, but when, once that's built, I can't do anything about it. So I just wanna, you know, speak my piece, but I appreciate everything, you know, all the nice, and I appreciate people and I know that's been vacant for seven years, that they wanna make it nice. I'm just, it's not in the best interest of myself or my street, so.
Did you get that, Mary? Did you get the info? I thought you needed it.
Oh, yeah.
Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition of this petition?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Go ahead. Hi, my name's Robert Donovan and I live at 36 Baltimore Street. I'm actually one house over between, you know, the other side there of the property. I think, you know, it is trying to put more people into what's fairly a densely populated area that we are living in. The other thing I see, the footprint of the property, it's very similar to the footprint of the property at 30 Baltimore and my property at 36. And I think it would be setting not a very good precedence by having the structure being put in there because now it seems like it would open that up that maybe the property that right now just got sold could also go that way, maybe the my property. So that's kind of what I'm looking at. You know, do you thank them for some of the changes they've done? You certainly do wanna see the place improved. I mean, it's been vacant for a long time, but, you know, that's just one of my concerns.
Well, would you wanna see anything? It is a dump, it is a mess.
I was just gonna ask the same question. It's funny, I was just, I was gonna let the next person talk and then I was gonna ask that question afterwards, but I was gonna ask what you guys would like to see there.
Well, I'd pretty much like to see what's already been fixed over. You know, when it was occupied, it went pretty nice.
And what's there now is, how many units? Four?
I, I thought there were three. I thought the main building was two family and the smaller, there's a smaller house in back, you know? And then there's a three-car garage, which would get used.
Do you see an opportunity maybe with the sewage concerns or the drainage concerns, if they were to make some concession and create a workable drainage system there?
Well, they're gonna have to. That's what I was gonna mention to you as well. They can't adversely change the, you know-
Yeah, because if it puts more water-
They can't make it worse for you. I would think if anything, it's gonna make it better down there because the steps they're gonna have to make to put perimeter drains and all the vegetation and stuff around the property is gonna make the drainage situation better, not worse. They're not just gonna let them go in there and, and, you know, pabloch, do whatever they want. So, you know, that, there was gonna be some heavy oversight from the city and the DPW on that. Just because, like Mr. Cahill said, it does have to go through site plan review and that's where all that stuff will get picked up. A lot of your concerns were. So not to put any levity on the concerns that you guys have, just to kind of give you some information from our side of the equation too. Did you wanna speak in opposition?
Hi, my name is Richard Mary Doughty. I live at 16 Ocean View Terrace. Unfortunately, I had worked during the last meeting, so I didn't get to contribute to my days at that time. My concern is actually that it is a six-unit place. I just think that it's way too big for our little neighborhood. I think it's a small neighborhood, that's what attracted me to that neighborhood, that they're all small units. And I agree with his concern that if it's a six-unit there, another place could decide, wow, that's a great idea, we could make a lot of money turning this into a six-unit. And we're gonna turn what is actually very charming about the place into something that isn't. So, and it's also a noise consideration.
Also what?
Noise. I would think that many people living in that area, it's small, will obviously bring, change our neighborhood quite a bit. And so that's my concern about it. It's not that it isn't pretty and it is. I just don't think it'd be good for us. And I would like to see that redone to a nice three, make it three condominiums, that would be nice. But I just don't see a six condo anymore.
Maybe four?
What?
Maybe four?
No. Three seems good.
Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition?
Bruce McDougal, 22, Ocean View Terrace. I basically just wanna second what she just said. I believe that the size and scope is just too big for that neighborhood. Everything that comes along with all those extra people crammed into that little space. They say they're gonna remove the snow from the site. That's just not practical to remove the snow or any storm. How would they possibly maneuver with that small space with those nine cars in that little space? I just don't see it. Then having a trash truck come down there to remove the dumpster, that's gonna make added noise to the area. I just don't think the size and scope fits the neighborhood, that's basically what I'm looking at.
So are you, anybody else wishing to speak in opposition?
My name is Kingsley Ochoa. I live on 23 Ocean View Terrace. The reason why we bought that property three years ago is because of the quietness and the, the way the place looked. This very building that they're talking about right now is gonna be very close to my bedroom. It's about four, four feet also to my bedroom. I'm looking at the trash and, no, I saw the picture, it's very nice. They should show other houses around that very property in the picture so that you can be able to see exactly how, how it's gonna look like. You know, they're just showing this building, yes, it's beautiful and everything, but just show something that is gonna be, show other houses that surround it so that everybody can see and see how it's already looking. Because if you can see the dumpster, where the dumpster is, that's right by my bed, right by my bedroom window, I don't think that's right.
Sir Kingsley, can you introduce your last statement for the record?
Last one is Ochoa.
Thank you.
I'm Wendy Nolan. I live at eight Ocean View Terrace. And I confer with my neighbors that it just is too much, too many, too many built apartments. We don't know who's, you know, you say you're going to, it's conducive to professionals. What if kids move in? It's gonna be noisier, it's gonna be more congested. And I think it's, it's just not right. I would like to see something done with the existing property.
What if they deleted the existing property and kids moved into that? And I'm, I'm just asking. I mean, you're, you got, a lot of the stuff that I'm hearing, folks, is not, they're not putting levity on it, is sound and noise and things like that. No matter what goes in there, the people are gonna talk, they're gonna drive cars, they're gonna have kids maybe. It's, and just something to keep in mind, I don't disagree, it is, it is a little large. I'm not, you know, sitting here, you know, saying how great it is. I'm just, I'm giving you guys some other, other ways to think about it that-
But it's times six.
Yeah.
Correct. What I'm saying is there's, there's a pretty long list of things that they can do there without even coming in front of us, which I think would be a lot more detrimental to the neighborhood than what we're looking at. Just something, you know, just another way to maybe look at it. Anybody else in opposition?
I'm Elizabeth Reese. I live at 18 Baltimore Street. I've been there for about 36 years and, you know, there's always been a problem with parking and the, you know, congestion of the traffic. It's a small, narrow street, parking on both sides and people have to pull over, that's one kind of, every, every weekend for church practice and so forth. So besides that, there's an accident and, you know, it's just not a good street for having obviously, you know, many more cars. Everyone has at least two, maybe two cars each and then-
They have, they have the required parking. They have, they have the required parking. So parking from our standpoint, if even it's-
It may be okay, but it's not gonna work out for you. It might be standard-wise. I think that's why it's zoned for a two-family, because of the fact you're not with that many cars, that many people. It's not just the buildings too. There is already a problem with the parking. And that has been, there was, there was a problem when, when you had when Chase Estates was in the same standing as the Hughes Estates. And they moved out with because of the parking and all the traffic, because the church is already really, really heavy on weekends.
Anybody? Sorry, head.
If there was a way to manage some kind of reparking, I thought that would be helpful, another way to, you know, alleviate anything that would've been, regard that, I mean, it's dangerous actually.
Did you mention the Chase Estates?
Yes.
Yeah, how did that-
Well, that probably because they're never doing this before.
Yeah, no. How did, how did people feel about the Chase Estates and how that was developed?
I think everybody was happy, you know, at the time, but it was not them, it was the ones before. They were doing something with Hughes Estates, which is the other side of the church.
Right.
And they wanted to hold up the same thing, more people, you know, a lot more people, a lot more cars on a small street. That was Atlanta Street and that's a little bigger even, but they did not get proof and they had to disallow it, however, without changing the property. City, you know.
You know, 'cause my opinion is, I don't live there, is that the developers did a good job on the Chase Estates and it actually is in addition to the neighborhood.
They did? That was good? Yeah. And also, they maintained the property because it wasn't too long ago.
Yeah.
It's no guarantee. So I'm just thinking that my people are living here, now they have to take away their living on the down-low to make more parking. It just doesn't seem like a good rule for anybody, even by it. I think the value of the property would be better if they had less condos and, you know, bigger for, you know, people that would rather spend the money and take you to that dump.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I guess that's just me. So Sean King from Autobahn Park 3. I think I agree with everybody else, we wanna see something there, but out of everyone here, I'm getting a three-story building built on top of my house. Like, it's my entire house, it's all eight feet from my house, a three-story building. To be honest, I wouldn't have bought my house if I walked in and saw a wall of windows staring down and everything fell apart right now. That's, that's my view.
My house is mine.
Oh, we can't do it like this.
So I'm Sean's neighbor. We live right next door. We're on the nine Autobahn Park. I'm located in the thigh and I'm also really concerned about having this huge building filled out, people looking in and no privacy at all. We have a really small lot. My backyard backs up into that really tiny house that they're gonna knock down. I can already see the dumpster, the work that's already started. I don't know what time legally supposed to be able to start, but they're already working at like 7:30 this morning.
7:00 AM.
7:00 AM. You know, I appreciate that Mr. Cahill and Tony Cahill were trying to get everybody together. Unfortunately, that doesn't happen in Manhattan, I don't know how that's gonna be happening. But I just feel really strongly, a lot of people have said the same thing. The parking situation, our street Autobahn Park is a really small street, there's not a lot of legal cars on that street. We all have to park in a driveway. We can't get down Baltimore if there's anything going on in church, never mind the smell is warm. So I don't know what to do, like, I'm saying, you can't prove it by parking. But we've been there 27 years, it's a nice, quiet neighborhood. That's why, you know, we moved, you know, I moved to Lynn when we got married. I don't know, I'm not used to talking to someone like this, but I would, I'm gonna be quiet.
Would you like sort of four cars in use? A lot of weed space?
That would be something that I couldn't agree to right now.
No, no, I didn't mean to push children. Do you see any concern?
I don't know. I just feel a little awkward asking right now.
I'd like to actually get back to the people in opposition and kind of, let's, let's finish one thing before we go on to the next. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition? No? Anyone? Seeing that they're none, I'm gonna close the hearing for those in opposition. I'll now ask, what is the wish of the board? Now you wanna say it for what?
Would you like to take some time to take that over? I mean, but would you have another meeting? I don't know. It seems to be nice if something went into that property. I mean, six units is like too much.
Right. Absolutely. I, I have a question before we go down that road. All the people that were in opposition, were you guys at the meeting? Was, was, you guys were all at the meeting?
I know, but at all time, I wasn't at one.
So just, no disrespect to anyone, didn't get invited, so we work off the advice, let's survive by the city. That's, that's what we do.
And that's some of the confusion you had mentioned. Have you, anyone within 300 feet said-
Is it 300? I thought it was 200. Is it 300? It's 300? Yeah, anybody with 300?
We're really, this is how involved we are. We went out and measured all the houses on our street. All of us are out there measuring and several have not received anything. They've only got stopped second-hand for me. Some feel they don't even need to be here because they have no voice in it, but they really do because they're within the 300.
Sure?
So I don't know.
I was just, I was just curious because I was wondering if these, if these concerns came up at the meeting. Now, that's why I was, I was wondering if it, you know, if it was, you know, if it was spoke about at the meeting. Because it seemed like there was a lot of considerations from, from the owner's standpoint made at, you know, from what we saw last month to what we saw this month. It got smaller. They, they made some great strides in aesthetic view, I think, compared to the box that they had going in there before. So I was just curious if you guys had actually, you know, went to the meeting and voiced this stuff and it had come through. Is that what the board is looking for? Is the board looking to vote on having it continued due to redesign or is it, I mean-
What's April 2nd? Two more weeks or three, three more weeks? I'd like to see you take one more crack at it, only because I think that something should go there that will be a great improvement over what's there now. Even a four unit or even, even something new would probably, well, something existing probably wouldn't trigger the drainage issue, but something that exceeds a zoning would trigger it. So that would be in your favor if it went to four units. Or, I don't know, I guess, what is it now? There's three there now. Two and a one, right?
Two and a one.
So if you went, if you went to four, you would trigger that relief that you're-
That's vacant for, I think, seven years.
Yeah, but I mean, the drainage issue, you would trigger that relief, you know, that you're seeking, so, and then you'd get something in the neighborhood, be a nice compromise. Just see, it sounds like to me, it would be nice to have another meeting between the neighbors. Maybe attorney Cahill could take a list right here of all you people right here.
Four makes sense. Or is like the max?
Six. Well, why don't you have that meeting? Why, you guys see if you can come to an agreement at another meeting? We push it off till, what, the 16th maybe? Give them a month or you wanna do it two weeks? Up to the, up to the petition.
I just imagine significant carrying costs associated with this building. I believe, I think that's about $650,000 to purchase and do some remediation. So they're very anxious to try to do whatever he's able to do on the property, just because of the cost. So clearly, there's an interest in us continuing this one more time. We would ask for the earliest date possible if that's-
April 2nd.
I, I'll, I'll go along with the board and push to April 2nd. I'd like to hear a little bit more about what, what we're looking for from them though because you, all I'm hearing is drop it to four units. I mean, they could, they could reconfigure the inside of this building with the size it is and make it four units. And they'd come back with the same building with a different footprint. You know what I mean?
That's true.
You know what I mean? I'd like to hear a little bit more.
Concerning the amount of people, maybe the amount of trash that is going to...
So, you guys are...
So, I'm worried about that dumpster stinking with twelve to eighteen people with the trash in it, seagulls, rats. And I understand they invest a lot of money and I respect them totally and appreciate that if they could walk out with a very nice property for a couple of years online, I might have trouble selling my house because of that. So, I'm just looking at my own personal interest. I know, I have all respect for these guys. They could do two trash pickup.
Listen.
There's a lot of stuff they could do to...
Time out. So, I guess I'm asking the board, I'm not asking the audience, unfortunately. The board, are we looking, we're looking for some size relief for people-wise? I personally, if it's going to go to four, I think it should go down in scale a little bit. I don't, I think, you know, not, I don't want to see them come back because, I mean, from what I'm hearing, if I was him, I would have just come back with the same thing with four units in it, with the same size. You know what I mean?
Three bigger units.
Right. It's just bigger units with less units. So, and then you would have families down there and it would be complete chaos. So, if we're going to ask them to go to a four or five or whatever, they deem financially fit or whatever. Remember, this is their property. That I just, I think from my point of view, I'd like to see it just be a little bit smaller. I think you made great strides in the aesthetics. And I think what you're trying to do is great. I think it's just a little bit big for what's down there. So, I'm not giving, I'm not going to give you a definitive number, but I think six is a little much. I don't think it needs to be three. I can say that, but, you know, that's just, I can only speak for myself. I can't speak for the rest of the board. So, that's what I'd be looking to see. You know, from the trash standpoint, you guys have a trash area. It's fenced in. I mean, those are all requirements. That's all going to hit site plan review. That's all going to hit ISD, all those things that are going to get picked up by the other parts of City Hall. Unfortunately, what we can focus on is what it looks like. Is it more detrimental to the neighborhood? You know, the setbacks and the things like that. So, that's what we're focusing on here. So, I would make a motion to continue to the second. I think that's two weeks from now.
A second?
And we're looking, we're looking for you guys just to come back with what you feel might be a little, just a little bit more reasonable. And we're going to leave, I think I would leave that to the petitioner, wouldn't you?
Yeah.
I just feel like, do you think that's enough time, Ian, to redraw something new and then still meet with everybody?
We were ready to do these revisions based on the March nineteenth meeting. So, he's saying yes.
Talking two weeks.
Yeah, times are the...
And meet with them on, okay.
I mean, I'm going to leave the meeting up to you. I'm not going to, I don't personally need to see that as a stipulation from my standpoint. I don't think you need to pull a whole nother meeting together. I think you've heard what the opposition is. At the end of the day, you have to do what's financially and responsibly best for you. So, I think we're just asking you guys as a petitioner to go back and see if you, maybe you want to take just one more reasonable crack at it for our standpoint. You know, we've heard them, you've heard them, and, you know, in two weeks, we'll hear what, see what you guys come back with. Want to call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Wood? Yes, to continue, if you have any questions?
To continue, April 2nd.
Mr. Wood?
Yes, to continue.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mrs. Curly?
Yes.
Mr. Jusson?
Yes, to continue. Thank you. Thank you. The next case this evening is yet another continued case. Case number nine, nine-eight-seven... Actually, I'm going to give it a minute. You guys all going to clear out or... Who's? We get to keep going.
I have so many plans for this thing.
Winter's coming, you'll be able to start, you'll be able to use it again, right?
I can wallpaper my house with it.
I'll tell you what, it's right there. All right, I'm going to call, oh, sorry. I'll call the meeting back to order. The next case is case nine-eight-seven-two, forty-seven Broad Street. This is another reconsidered, this is another reconsideration. Sam? Right, this would be forty-seven Broad Street, not forty-two, right? Forty-seven, forty-seven Broad Street. This is another reconsideration. I brought it back up. The reason why I brought it up for reconsideration, guys, is that this, like, like the other one, this had no construction. There's no changes to the building. They're literally just looking to continue using it as a use that it was used as. You know, if it had construction, if it had to make changes, I would be in a hundred percent disagreement. I was just hoping that maybe if some time was taken, maybe that thought was put into consideration, there might be a, some relief on their part. So, I'll make a motion to reconsider. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Chair, seconded by Mr. Wood. Call the roll.
Mr. Magwell?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mrs. Curly?
Yes.
Mr. Jusson?
Yes, to reconsider. So, you guys have kind of already heard what I said and, I mean, I don't think anything's changed, right, Sam?
No. Correct that the building is the building. It's been that way. I think I went through at the last meeting the history. I gave you the Health Department records, a variety of records. The only thing I think that I added are two things. I could add. There's a letter that I provided from the assessors. I only asked them to go back forty years, okay? They went back forty years. They paid taxes as a three-family, for forty years. I don't know many people in City Island that volunteer to pay more in taxes. I understand that the assessors tax what they see, but if I had a two-family and I was being taxed as a three-family, I think in forty years, I would have addressed that issue. I gave you the nineteen-twenty-six directory in which Cyrus Lusha lived there in nineteen-twenty-five and Dorothy Lusha, who lived to be a hundred and one, was living there and was trying to settle her estate. So, there were members of Lusha's family there all during that time. The property had been, in the nineteen-twenty-six directory, two units and a store. And you see the assessors even reflect it's a store. It's in the R-three district. I can't, the building's no, no bigger. The lot's getting no bigger. I do think, and I only hazarded a guess, and I said at the last meeting, but I don't think I demonstrated, but we considered various parking plans. And I say this often, that I understand it's an irregular-shaped lot. I can't make the lot any bigger. The lot's not changing its size. But there's no question that what was intended, I believed in the zoning ordinance, was that if somebody changed something, then they had to meet today's requirements. And today's requirements for three-family dwelling are five spaces. One could get five spaces, as this drawing reflects, but we made a decision, given the history of the property, that a parking space for each unit made more sense to have some green space. But if the concern was, well, we need to get five spaces or four spaces, then I can show you a couple of plans that can do that, that can be achieved. But when you're dealing with an irregular-shaped lot, and it strikes me as somewhat strange that the building's sort of back, that in terms of the layout, I can't move these like pieces of a jigsaw puzzle on a board. So, we're working with what was there, and I am saying to you that the reality was that this property has been used as a three-family dwelling for at least forty years, according to the assessors. And according to the city directory, maybe fifty or sixty years. And according to the records of the Health Department, because the City of Lynn has an ordinance that when you rent property, you have to get approval from the Health Department. So, there are numerous documents that show, other than the members of the Lusha family, when they did rent one unit, they complied. And there's a record that says, okay, the third floor unit was rented to X. So, I think that we felt that we weren't asking for something that hadn't already been there. We were just asking that it be recognized and appreciating that circumstances change just like the zoning ordinance changes. But the lot size is never going to change. The building size hasn't changed, and it's really a question of, is this an appropriate use for this property? I don't think there was a single neighbor in opposition. And I say to you that when you look at your standards, it says, one of the criteria is, can you do this without substantial detriment to the public good? Well, I don't stand here and say I speak for the public, but if there are people from the public who don't accept this use or don't want it, like there were in that last case, they have an opportunity to be heard. And if they're not here, then I would suggest to you that it's not detrimental to the public good. And for that reason, I think it ought to be approved. I appreciate the opportunity to put it forward. But my experience, and I know the frustration the members of the board have, and I had this and I've explained it over the past, that for whatever reason, depending on what city department you go to, and my personal favorites are the Electrical Records and the Fire Department. But you can go in this building and have the same address and get four answers as to what it is. And I'm not saying any of them are wrong. I'm just saying that, as Mr. Cole pointed out, the assessors tax on what they see. They're not the zoning authority, okay? But you go to the Fire Department, they have their regulations. If you have this, you've got to have a hard-wire system. You have to have this. You go to the Electrical Department. This house has got four meters. You have to have in a three-family dwelling, a house meter. So, it's got four meters. So, could I point to every single item being satisfied? No. Could I point to a lot of them being satisfied? Yes. And if there were others that needed to be satisfied, these people are willing to do whatever is required by the two thousand and nineteen standards, notwithstanding that their forbear was living there in nineteen-twenty-five. So, I would hope that reconsideration, I know it did prevail. I appreciate that. And what we're looking for is to get what we think was the actual use of the property record.
Anybody else on the board that may like to say or add?
Yeah, I do. I think there's a couple of points, Mr. Chairman, about having a two-family and paying taxes on a three. That's not a bad deal if you're getting rents for a third unit as well. I don't, I think that would be a good trade-off to maybe increase the taxes, less than one month's rent. And I know it was used as a three, but I just want to cite some, because I did some work. I wanted, I want to be fair. I personally don't think I'm going to sit here and approve every illegal three that's a legal two that's been functioning as a three. I don't see that as my position on the board. I, that's not good for the city. That's not good policy for the city. I will look at them, each one individually. So, I did, I, so I dealt with the Building Department and I got some information from the Chief Building Commissioner. And basically, in nineteen-twenty-six, it was a two-family.
With a store.
In nineteen-forty-five, the ZBA allowed the conversion of the structure, at that time being used as a one-family, to a two-family. So, this went to the ZBA to allow for a two-family. That may have been why the store was there. In nineteen-seventy-seven, there was a building permit for a store at that location, but no other information. The structure is currently being used as a three without any building permits for the conversion and presumably no code compliance either. It goes on to state that if you were going to convert the structure today, the amount of work that you'd have, different things that you'd have to do to make it a three-family. So, that's, again, that's my position. At best, this was a two-family with a store, and then it became a three-family. And I'm going to tell you, there's going to be hundreds, maybe there's over a thousand of these type situations, and more and more are going to come up. People sell, like, this is a state sale. They want to come up, they want to maximize the dollars. I understand that. But what they have there is a two-family and with limited parking, and maybe you could even squeeze two. But what do we got? You know, you got a building with all hot tub. I mean, what good is that? You know, at least if you had this for a two-family, you could, you'd have a yacht, you'd have a green space. But, you know, we just, we just, like I said, I try to be fair on these things. I think I am fair, but I don't, I just don't see the need to make this a lever for it. That's all I'm going to say on it.
Anybody, thank you. Anybody else on the board have anything they'd like to add? I just have a question. Do you guys live in the property? I'm sorry.
No, no.
You don't? So, it's a complete rental property for you guys? I'm just asking. It was just a question. It wasn't, I had my opinion. It was just, it was just a question that didn't change my opinion and my mind either way. So, I was going to ask for the reconsideration. I was just curious. So, you know, I tend to agree with Norm quite a bit on this one. I agree that I look at these on a case-by-case basis as well, and I look at each one of these individually. You know, we heard one of these, you know, kind of the same situation with thirteen Fox Street earlier tonight, and it's completely a different situation in my mind compared to the situation we're discussing on this case here. I look at them and I look at them as where if there's no work done, it's been used for thirty years as a three-family and nothing's being changed. To me, no harm, no foul. We're not changing anything in the neighborhood. Kind of like the one, you know, on Lover's, Lover's League was kind of the same way in my mind. You know, there's, and I understand, you know, it might be for value. Like, you guys are keeping it as in the family. At the end of the day, it's probably all for value, but I look at it a little differently than Norm does on the other side of it. But I agree on the front side, we take these case by case. So, at this time, I'll ask, you know, what's the wish of the board? I will make a motion to approve it as a three-family.
Who's on this? Excuse me, I think she asked me on the original reconsideration, but I wasn't on it.
I'll make a motion. Is there a second?
I second.
Motion made by the Chair, seconded by Mr. Wood. Call the roll.
Mr. Magwell?
Yes, Mr. Mag.
Um, Mr. Wood?
He's not on, that's it.
Mr. Wood?
Uh, yes, to grant.
Um, Mr. Cole?
No.
Mrs. Curly?
I have to agree with Mr. Cole, no.
And Mr. Jusson?
Yes, to grant. Motion denied. Start. Okay, the next case this evening is case number nine-eight-five-three-fourteen Joyce Street, correct? Good evening. This was to allow the construction of a garage on existing non-comforming lot?
Yes, sir.
Beautiful? Like a dream. I didn't know. If I know it, I should have processed this. You have the new black lamp?
Yes.
You can keep it, I have five more.
Oh, you did?
Can we have our five now? Can we have four more of them? No, that's fine. Maybe one more, give it to, let those guys down there and have it.
She's really happy for you.
I want to see the difference.
There must be a difference between the new one and the old one.
Must be in there, right?
Oh, yeah, should be in there.
Why is it not?
I'll give it back. We'll give it back. This one's too...
I was going to keep one for you.
Is this it?
But there's nothing, it doesn't show the...
This was the last one.
Okay. Yeah, it doesn't, doesn't show the structure.
No, it's the old one. It didn't have anything last.
This is, this is the existing structure, yeah?
No, that's the, that's the new structure, huh?
Here's the house.
I think the garage is going here, is it? This is the garage.
This is the garage. This is empty space.
This is the house.
Mini, small car.
Existing structure. This is the, this is the... Those garages here.
This door. This door.
What's it, outside the home?
Yeah.
Right on the line, huh? What's the space between the line and the garage? Gotta be, what, six inches?
You, uh, the border line and the garage?
Yeah. Six inches?
Uh, yeah, six inches.
Six inches?
For the gutter, for the gutter.
Is the gutter even gonna fit? Let me guess, you guys are ten, right?
I don't see, I don't see opposition behind me.
I was, I can't believe, if I lived at ten, ten Joyce, I'd be sitting right here, I'll tell you that.
This makes me very hopeful.
Wow.
Oh, absolutely.
So, because you don't wanna, your neighbors and whatnot, you wanna have privacy, is that what you said a long time ago?
No, only this. In two years, they will force us to buy electric cars. I have two Mercedes. I cannot throw them. Eight years, I keep my old Mercedes. He saved my life, he was my dream for 1986, when I was in Germany, I saw, it like a glove, you know? And it's ugly enough. I only improve the view from the street. Now, Mr. Bakwa was there, he can explain, it's ugly. The water, the rainwater from the neighbor, from north, from behind me, everything, and the garbage comes to my yard. So I'm planning to do three, four inches edge behind me, and the water will go on Essex Street. And the rocks, now, no soil, the erosion, cleaning all the soil from my backyard. They throw garbage. I believe when I improve the view, they will be ashamed to throw garbage again. Only that way I can improve. You know, I don't like it now. I don't like it, and it's ugly, and if you give me okay, I can prove it that I will improve. Like the, long time ago, when the people that came from Europe, they improved. Now it's, America's different. Same thing. When I bought this property, I spoke with the lawyer, and I asked him, eventually, if I'm healthy and alive, can I? Of course, it's a huge driveway. Now, six years, my neighbors, they use my driveway. I have pictures when I bought the property. Four years, two cars, one SUV and one over there. They, the kids, they play over there with the balls in the wall, boom, boom, boom. I can't go every day, say, hey, what are you doing? I, my pressure goes up each time when somebody does something in my driveway.
You ever think about moving?
At age of my...
So you, the size of the garage is dictated by the two cars you have, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
You wanna put your two, your two Mercedes in it, that's why it's the size that it has?
Maximum two years, we will have electric.
No, I'm just, I'm just curious.
And over there is 42 feet, but it's a rock, solid rock, could be 41, could be 40. That's the maximum.
That's a 60, it's gonna be 61 feet long? Forty-two. What's a 61?
Forty-two.
Forty-two.
Forty, yeah. Eventually, eventually. It depends from the excavation machine.
61 is the property line?
The property line, to the, to the wall, to the corner of there.
And so you don't have to dig into the rock here for the 42 feet?
Probably about five, six feet, it's a solid rock. And the machinery can excavate.
How are you gonna, and so in a normal excavation, there's a three-foot overdig. When there's only six inches to the property line, how are you gonna dig without digging the neighbor's property up to do the garage?
Oh, the guy who did excavation on Door 3 Store when they renovated, I spoke with the owner of the building. He said, and I watched it, I watched it two years, how precisely this guy is working. Precisely. I was amazed, he's a young man, and I was amazed at so young, and so he broke the wall without of any damages of the building. You know, they, you know, exactly. I am a builder, I'm a mason, and I know that these people over there, they recommended this, only for the excavation. Wakefield, they will do the pure concrete, and when the ground floor is like this, then I will build the concrete blocks.
So you know you only have one foot four to get out of your car? When you drive in, you only have one foot four on both sides before your door hits the wall?
No, no, no. It's 13 foot from inside.
13 outside, outside.
From inside. I measured it.
It says outside.
You know, this drawing's gonna be showing here. So let's say you have six...
What tells you it's outside?
13, 13 is inside. 13 is a little bit more than my present garage.
Well, then that's, that's a problem then, because that means the drawings are wrong. If you're telling us that the drawings are wrong, that's a problem right out the gate. So if these drawings aren't correct, the dimension, well, you just said they're not. You just said the 13 is the inside dimension. Is the 13 the inside or the outside dimension of the garage? Because if it's the inside dimension, it's a foot wider than what you're telling us.
Oh, okay, yeah, 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 13 from corner to corner, yeah.
So the 13 is the outside dimension. I just, personally, sir, I think you're way off base here. I think this is way too big. I'm not gonna vote for anything that's six inches off the neighbor's property line. You're never gonna be able to build it. I don't care who you get down there. This is what I do for a living now, and there's no way you're gonna do it. So, I mean, I will never vote for it. So, I mean, I'm not, I can't even imagine what you have drawn, but it's way too big. I would suggest you cut it off at the back of the house, if anything, but making it narrow is not gonna work, because Mr. Wooten's not on it, you're not gonna be able to get out of the car. So I don't, I don't see this. Is there any, anybody wish to add anything?
Oh, that's a valid concern. How would you, you would get out of the car? How would you get out of the car?
Which car?
If you bring your Mercedes in, right, how would you get out and go inside your house?
Oh, oh, okay. There, I have door.
The car door, the new car.
The car's nine feet wide, 10 feet wide, with the doors shut?
Only from one side. Only from one side. Close to one more, I would exit only from one door, from the left door. Even now, I go like this inside. I have another stuff inside.
Any other questions on the board?
Do you have, this command, if you have what it looks like, how it's connecting onto the house?
I have a door over here.
So these drawings that you did, these are...
Yes, 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 sir.
Can I see them?
This is the back from east, from the backyard.
Because I remember we were talking about how, how is it gonna connect to the house?
I have, I have door over here.
You're gonna build this out of block? You're gonna make this out of cement, out of block?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Easy and cheap. I have, I see them, door, connecting door over here.
This is from the street?
Yes, sir.
And the door is where, right in front there?
Yeah. Over here, on this wall. It's like an emergency door, I don't know why, but it's locked now. I don't use, I never use it, it is.
Some of the, some of the things I see right off the bat here, the dimensions you have on this drawing don't match this one. Like I said, this, it's just, I'm not gonna, you're not gonna get my vote, so...
I will, I will not follow my dimensions. I will follow the dimensions which are given to me over here.
Well, then at a minimum, you have to go back and redo the drawings.
Okay.
All right. Any questions from the board? Any other questions? Anyone?
I can do, I can go to architect and make a professional.
That would work a little bit. I would suggest that.
You're not gonna approve it anyway, so...
Well, an architect's not gonna let him come back with this. So, an architect's gonna put some reason to this. This is insanity. It might make sense to him, he lives there. To me, it doesn't, you know, I'm not trying to be rude. So...
Just doesn't seem doable.
It doesn't seem doable. Like I said, how's he take the foundation with it six inches off the property line? I guess I'm gonna go through the process. So nobody else, no questions from the board? Anybody else here in favor of this? Is there anybody in opposition to this? No? And nobody else is half of this? Okay. What is the wish of the board? Motion?
You should give them a chance to have an architect.
I would give you a motion, I would make a motion to consider. I would strongly suggest you go seek a professional, like a designer or an architect, to come down and help you. Tell them what you're looking for, what you're trying to achieve, and let them put pen to paper and see if they can do something that makes, gets you everything that you're looking for, and is gonna make more sense to us. This just doesn't, doesn't flush out, it's not enough for us to make an educated decision right now, tonight. So I'll give a motion to consider with the stipulation that he goes and gets some architectural drawings.
I agree with you.
So is there a second for that?
After that, can I expect okay?
I can't answer that. It depends what you come back with. It depends on what you come back with. If you come back with something reasonably, I don't think you'd have a problem. So is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made by the chair, seconded by Ms. Curly. Call the roll. What do you, so next month, there's two dates, there's, what is it then? The second or the 16th? Would you rather have the latter date? Okay, yep. So motion to continue to April 16th? Pending some architectural or designer drawings. You can go see a designer, not an architect. Designer might be a little less expensive, to be honest with you. They'll do drawings for you.
Do we have some others?
I don't. You could look.
I have a recommendation, but if you need an architect, you can stand drawing and have them before you make it.
Correct. Some designers would do it though.
If I can do it, if I would do it, why necessary so precisely?
Well, maybe you worry, because you're a single family, you definitely do the wires yourself, so you will see a designer.
Because I did my house in my country, and this is a piece of cake for me.
Building was different here, so...
Five days, five days job, just the dimensions. If, yeah, this is not 14, yeah, it has to be 13.
Do we call the roll?
Yes. Mr. McQuarrie?
Yes, Mr. McQuarrie.
216? Good.
Mr. Wood?
I didn't notice. If I noticed this, I should have changed it.
Yes.
Mrs. Curly? Yes. Mr. Jussono?
Yes. So the case is continued to the 19th of next month. You'll get information, you'll get a letter, you'll get the information. Okay. First new case of the evening, are we ready? Next case is case number 9873, 69 to 73 South Elm Street. Sure.
To allow the reconfiguration of Lot 34, then assessors map 036 to its original, to its original configuration. Number 73, with a pre-existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling on a lot containing 3130 square feet with less than the required frontage, front setback, and right side yard. And number 69, with a two-family dwelling to be built on a lot containing 4507 square feet in the R4 apartment house district.
Mr. Vitale?
Hi, I'm Marilyn.
This is brother Jason.
Jason Barax.
Marilyn acquired this property in the last, two of the ends last year. They're working to refurbish the property. They have one other sibling, a sister who lives in Fall River, who for personal security and issues, would like to move to Lynn and occupies the home that's being refurbished. Previously, that home had been there since the 1920s. I brought the 1926 directory, because it does indicate that the other lot had four units. And then the building department records do reflect a freedom of information that says it's a, the other lot had four units. This Board of Appeals approved that lot with the four units for six units. What happened is, apparently, for whatever reason, the person who owned the property with the four units, there's a big, there were pictures in the records of a large, four-family home. And in fact, there's a plan that purports to be the parking plan of the six units on that lot, done by Audian Dwyer, where somebody drew in the lines. There's the building department's characterization, you know, here's the Audian Dwyer. So the Board of Appeals approved that lot, that's empty now, for six units. The house apparently was abandoned, and ultimately demolished, and ultimately sold. And for the period of time, in the world of title, these were two different titles, two changes of title. And then one individual bought the property at 69 with another individual, and then a third individual bought the property at 73 and then deeded it to those two. So in the world of title, because there's a merger of deed, the question is, you can't use a provision in the zone ordinance with respect to common frontage in the same ownership. So we believe, and the assessors maps reflect, and the records of the city reflect, there are two lots, and in fact, the assessors record had shown that. What they proposed to do is to build a duplex on the lot that once had a four and was approved for a six. And Marilyn would be on one side, Jason's family would be on the other. Now, they saw, over here on Liberty Street, the four units on 5,000 square feet, and then they spoke to the builder about constructing something similar, except it would be just two units rather than the four that are on the 5,000. This would be two units on 4,705 square feet, I believe. Be a garage under each unit, there'd be a space in front, so that's four spaces, the two-family requires three. The other lot, the building is pre-existing non-conforming because of the sideline. I had the lot staked, and I had the sideline staked as well, to assist members in being able to see it. So this is an R4 district, I think, in which multifamily units are permitted use. If you look at the assessors map, there are comparable uses on lots that are similar, some lots are bigger, some lots are smaller, and I think in terms of what it would do for the area, is evidenced by the substantial investment that's already been made to improve the house that's been there since the 1900s, would be to add again, state-of-the-art, two-family dwelling in a neighborhood in which multiple family units are permitted use, and to put it on a lot that's comparable in size, in which this board approved six units in the past, which had four.
What year did they approve the six units?
I have a copy in the...
Six units, and not, not, that lot that's vacant now.
Right. And then there was a freedom of information in asking legal status of number 69 in 1995, and it was said to be four units. So...
Sam, do you have any, any designs or...
Yeah, well, I pointed out to you that the floor plan, and I know the board's sensitivity, and that's another reason that we picked, that they picked, in the smaller building that's over on Liberty Street. So here's the first floor plan, which is a basic living room, dining room, smaller kitchen. So these would be the, I think I got nine to 10 copies of this.
Do you have anything besides the floor, we have elevations, or just, just the floor?
It would be, no, I have the floor plan of the first and second floors. And the second floor is only two bedrooms, and the front would be in the same, if you looked at Book 4 in Liberty, it's two of those. It's 16 feet in width, that's 32.
I get it, but Sam, I'm not gonna go down and look at Liberty and assume that that's what's going in on this property.
No, I'm not, that's why I brought you the floor plan.
I get it, I'm just, I'm saying, I mean...
I have the first floor and the second floor, Unit A and Unit B.
Okay. You can submit the stuff, I'm just saying, I wanna see design information, or what you're planning on doing with these, you know, the buildings.
I understand that, but I wanna do, first, because obviously, yeah, I think I made nine copies of each floor, and I did have the lot staked, and you have Mr. Reed's footprint of the building. So in terms of the size of the building, that will get the matching garage under, but this is a plan that was approved by the board in the past, this board.
In what year?
What year? 2017 to 16. You put four of those units on 5,000 square feet.
You're talking Liberty Street, yeah.
Looking at the house from the street on the left-hand side. Yep. It could fit two cars back to the back. Is that the first or the second floor? I had it in a separate floor.
So for these cars to get out of this car after morning?
Yes, that is correct. Do you have a way to...
Yeah.
Where's the front of the, where's the street on this? This is, you have Mr. Reed's plan? I don't know, what's this, what's, what's, there's a front of the building here, is this? It's a 16-foot wide building. Okay, so this is... Sixteen on each side, so if you turn it this way. And you have the first and second... And you have the first and second floor.
There you go.
And we meet all the dimensional regulations for the use of a two-family lot. We have the required setbacks, three A I, sidelines, parking, lot coverage, we meet all the dimensional regulations.
Of a two-family?
Yes.
I thought you need a hundred, what, seventy-five feet of frontage?
That, that's why we asked you to relieve. I said, the lot can't, the lot hasn't changed inside.
It doesn't need to be, it's in the lot size, too.
Right. The lot, the lot has been four thousand seven hundred and five square feet since it was drawn.
How the hell they ever get six, we only get six units.
It's like a pancake style?
Yeah, they, they got six units, here's the plan that was filed with the board of review, when it was a four-family. That was the plan that was approved. And I don't know what happened, because that plan, that variance was granted, it was, it just never.
Which one was that there?
Is this, this floor?
No, the next one over.
No.
This person never filed for it.
Right, this is an existing single-family home, right there, right, been that way since the beginning.
So that's the end. So this would be the first, this would be the second, or this would be the third floor?
No, there is no third floor. There's a.
How does the carpet?
Excuse me? The kind of garage at the end? So it's a garage?
No, no, ground level, because that's a flood zone, so if you were to dig down, so it's gonna be ground level. Okay, so this is ground, but could be a red circle?
Correct.
Would be the second.
Correct.
No, side by side. It's impossible for us.
Guys, Tom, I'm at a minimum, gonna ask to continue this to next month, so you can present the information that you have, and we can intelligently look at it, 'cause you don't have any elevations, you don't have, you have a couple of floor plans.
We hadn't, we didn't ask for relief for height.
Sam, if you wanna build a building on this property, you're gonna, you're gonna show me drawings to get me to vote on it.
But I'm just saying to you.
I'm, I'm just saying to you, I'm telling you right now what you're gonna do, and you're gonna give them to me before the night of the meeting.
I, but I'm saying to you that we did not ask for, nor would we ask for relief for height.
I'm not, I don't care about, I wanna know what the building looks like.
Okay.
It could be a brick building like the last gentleman was sitting here looking at, from what I'm looking at here, I don't know.
Glad to give you that.
These people think there's three floor, these members think there's three floor plans, these members are trying to figure it out, that's what I mean. I want, I want you to send the information like you're supposed to before the night of the meeting, Sam, so we can intelligently look at it. This is a perfect, of people not wanting to spend any money on the front side of this. And I, I respect it, I know exactly what you're up against.
All right, what was that?
I, I, I need to see, I wanna see what you guys are building on the lot, and this is just not enough information for that, and I'm not trying to be, you know that, Sam, you know what I mean, this, and I want, we gotta get it before the meeting, because the members need a chance to digest it, and if they have questions, they can rifle them back to Mary to get them to Sam, so that we can intelligently understand what you guys, 'cause this is not a single lot with a single-family house, and it's, you know what I mean, there's a lot of movement parts to this, so we've gotta kinda see, now we can kinda see what you wanna do on the different sections and the different lots, we've kinda get the different pieces of the puzzle, we can put it together and have an opinion before we get here, where we, we don't have that opinion, that ability tonight. So, all I'm saying is, I'd like to, at a minimum, continue this, whichever meeting you guys think you need to put some information together and get back to us, whether it's the first meeting or the second meeting next month, or if it's the month after, I don't care, but just come back with at least.
The meeting dates are, the second of April, the sixteenth of April?
Yes.
So that's what you're asking? Do you?
Yeah, those are a lot.
It's safer to say the sixteenth, that way you'll know, you, this plan exists, it's on the shelf somewhere, it's pretty safe. But it's safer to say.
Then they're gonna lose there.
Yeah.
We don't know.
We'll go take a picture.
So.
So we're gonna.
So, I'm, I'm, right now, are you okay, Sam, when we make a motion to continue?
We can take it.
This first, wasn't it?
We're gonna continue the meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, is that something you guys are, before we, I go through the whole process, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go through the motions here, but I'm gonna make a motion, and there's no guarantee it's gonna pass, to continue this to next month.
Sure.
Let you guys get some information together, is that?
This is our first time doing this, so whatever you guys.
Not a problem at all.
We'll go ahead and gather.
So, you guys are pretty much, you know what, I'm gonna, we're gonna go through, is there any other questions on the board?
I have one.
Well, you can have ten if you want.
Is this, is this here, is this half of the building upstairs and downstairs? What, what?
Yeah, you have, you have first floor, second floor, unit A, unit B, two units side by side, put, put the first floor on top of the second floor.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's kinda, yeah.
It says A and A.
Yeah. Two stairs, the one upstairs.
Down here.
Yeah, but this is beautiful.
This is only half a building right here, so it's unit A, unit B is over here.
Right.
And that's what I'm asking, one unit, half of this upstairs and downstairs.
That's correct.
Great.
There you go. Okay, so Jean, did you get your question answered? Jean? Is that, you, you wanna have any more questions, is that your question?
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, yeah, I do, I do have a question.
What do we got?
So, I was looking at the, tracing the deed of this property, and it was public property, it was sold by Dunn to Manalasi, Manalasi, or Dala, blah, 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 and it happened in like two thousand two, but it was interesting, because the building department has the same lot being transferred to the Lincoln Development Housing Corporation in two thousand two.
But there's a, there's not a deed.
I'm just saying, what happened?
I asked the building department.
The city council gave this, basically gave this land out twice, is that, is that, did you see that?
No, I don't, I don't think they did, oh, yeah, but I operate on, you're the record owner if you have a deed, there's no deed that supports that.
So you didn't, you didn't look at it any further?
I can't make somebody an owner unless I got a deed.
I'm just saying, I'm just asking.
Let me tell you what I, why I look at it, I'll tell you the truth. I look at it always, because, as, as you would know, as a member, the former member of the council, often the city deeds property to a limited crack class of people, like a butts, a neighbors.
Exactly, like a butts, right.
Or, or they deed it for a particular use, landscaping or parking. Did I look at the deeds? Yes, because I don't see any of those restrictions, because if I did, I would have said, there's a restriction.
Yeah.
So that's, that's what I'm saying, I looked at it from that perspective.
Yeah, no, I was just, like I said, I, I, registration deeds have this information, city hall has that information.
Yeah, and you're right also, that for the longest time, it went this way, until I think Dunn conveyed it to Manalasi and one other, and then Manalasi conveyed the two to her.
Yeah. Can I ask you, Mr. Pol, I'm sorry, I don't wanna get you guys, I'm gonna, you guys, what, what does all that mean?
Well, to me, I just wanna get an explanation, that the city council basically gave this lot to a non-profit organization in two thousand two. That's, that was my point on.
Who was the other gentleman?
Lincoln, yeah, Lincoln Development at the time, but, yeah, my only other concern, I'm gonna tell you what I'm not, I drive down that street, I went to look at that, and I know that area well, I was involved in another public property on that street, up for a butth, at the very, very end, years and years ago, I had to back my truck out to get out of that street. Either that or I gotta turn onto somebody's private property, and I, I don't do that, I try not to do it, that's gotta be the smallest, one of the, probably thirty feet at the most, a duplex, you gotta, I don't know, I don't know, I think a duplex is asking for a, a little much for that lot of forty-five hundred square feet, that's me, I'm just telling you how I feel about it.
I feel the same way.
'Cause I don't see a, a major hardship on the overall sale of the property at two twenty-five, got a nice house.
Which they refurbished.
That's awesome, I'm just saying, I think that's, that's, in today's, I just think that's asking for a lot.
It's just a density issue.
Yeah, density is down there, it's, it's pretty tough for the.
Well, your predecessors bought four, wasn't enough, and wanted to put six.
Yeah, well, that, that was thirty years ago. Yeah, we can live in the past, Sam, or we can, we can live in the future.
Is there any, any other questions of the, from the board? Anybody else wish to speak in favor of this petition? Are you guys here in opposition to the petition, or you just kinda?
One question.
Yeah, opposition.
Opposition, okay, I'm, I'm gonna close the meeting for those in, in favor of the petition, I'm gonna open for people in opposition. Anybody in opposition to this petition? Step forward and you can speak, give your name and you can, what?
My name is again, I live in, I speak the South, South Elm, street next to the lot.
Live right next to it, yep.
Yep.
Right there.
They want to build a two-family and spend. So, I am.
Can you step forward, I can hear.
This, this is first time I go through the hearing, so maybe I don't understand much, but the reason I'm here, because I lived in that property for like over thirty years, twenty-three years, I lived to, next to that lot. So, I understand they, before the lot, they have a six-family house there, then the city tear it down, then that land, no, not buildable.
Why did they tear it down, was it just in disrepair, or was it fire?
Just tear it out, just to make a parking and make a park, but not build a house. And that time, the city, they want to split that land to a half for me and a half for the numbers, seventy-three.
So, but I think I, that not buildable, so I have to pay a half for the, that lot, so
I don't get that half, so, so the owner, the house, the seventy-three, they take the whole lot, so, so I think the, the house, number seventy-three, they own that land, then I don't understand why now they separate, the number two-three and the number sixty-nine should be the, the piece of land and not buildable, not the city, no say, no build a house there.
Well, technically it's not, they need to get a variance, that's why they're.
It's, it's not separate right now, that's what they're asking for.
Yeah.
To allow a reconfiguration.
They want, or they wanna switch it back to the way that it was before, or some sort of fashion of, of that.
So, I just, because that's a dead-end street on South Elm, they just build the two-family house on the, used to be the parking garage for the auto, auto resort on, on the end, they, they, right now, they have a two-family there, if they build another two-family opposite, should be number sixty-nine, number sixty-eight, that two-family house, now they build another two-family house on the number sixty-nine, they come back to number sixty-nine, so should be crowded and don't park, and I, I wanna, I'm concerned about that, so that's why I'm here.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good job. Anybody else in our, is that it? Is that all you have? Anybody else in our position?
Hello, my name is Evans, I just bought my house two thousand seventeen, I just bought it on the market, actually I'm trying to move out, out of South Elm, because.
The two of us?
Eddie's South, I'm number Eddie.
Eddie?
Yeah. So, when I was looking for a home, you know, find this house, I was like, you know, I like it, this street is very quiet, perfect for two ways of family, but there's a lot of thing about that street in general I'm not like, it's always getting flooded, trash is horrible, and talk about that, like when you call the city, the, the lean city store, couple times they are called, they left me like very nasty message, kinda like, you know, go back, you know, to high park, gushes or reforms, so very like, not appropriate thing, so I decided to do something about it, and like sell my house, because it's been a horrible experience living there, you know, so this street is very nice, but it's always getting flooded, and so as a matter of, as a result of that, so next month, I'm putting my house on the market, because Lena has been a very horrible experience for me, because I was told that coming from Medford, that I wasn't gonna like it, but I'm like, you know what, you cannot do something without even trying it, so I give it a try, so from the moment that I moved there till now, it's had many issues, trash is everywhere, as a matter of fact, I was just telling her that, when you're coming in from being on the South Elm, there's a part of trash that's been there for like three months, I took pictures of it, it's always trashy, it's always getting flooded, so it's horrible, so, but otherwise, it's a perfect street to his family, it's, it's very quiet, but it's not falling, so.
Sorry to have that.
Yeah, too bad.
That's, that's, that's a bad, a bad experience. Anybody else in our position?
I guess, Mr. Chairman, just something the gentleman brought up, and Sam, and Sam included it, in, in his reasons for granting, and that is, it's in a flood zone.
It is in a flood zone.
So now you're talking about showing, showing a building up that meets those kind of requirements, so it's not as simple as slapping a duplex.
I don't think that, I wouldn't think they let you do a garage under in the flood zone, to be honest with you, but that's.
It's a flood zone.
Actually, I don't think you're fine.
It's ground level.
I don't know, I haven't seen it yet.
What was your name, sir, I'm sorry?
Evans.
Evans?
Yes.
What's your first name?
Evans is my first name, that's my last name.
Evans Charles?
Evans Charles.
Evans Charles. Are you, ma'am, were you always looking to speak in opposition?
Yeah. I'm a teen boy, and I live at eighteen Lowell Street Court, right on the backside of the brown house. Like Evans, we got a terrible flood issue down there on Lowell Street and on South Elm, the last storm in September, I had three feet of water in my basement, I never seen so much water, I've been down there thirty-two years, I've never seen so much water down in the courtyard in my life, I mean, the water was just coming in the back door, and the house, the brown house, I didn't know, is they putting a, I thought they said they were putting a four-partment building, but they just said tonight it's gonna be a duplex?
Yeah.
Okay, so, my concern still is, if they put it there, is this gonna improve the sewage drainage problem that we have down there, or is it gonna make it worse?
It's not gonna make it worse, but I don't think it's gonna improve it too much either, if you're in a flood zone. You know, I, I would seriously doubt it will make it worse, 'cause the, you know, the ISD would, they're gonna have to conform to the, to the FEMA regulations for the, to building a flood zone, no matter what they do, ISD's gonna make them do that, that's not true.
That's one of the hardships, and it relates to the soil, or it's now in the FEMA protocol.
What's the hardship saying?
Excuse me?
You said that was a hardship?
The hardship is relating to soil condition and to progress, FEMA has included this in now in the flood zone.
Yep.
So that anybody who builds anything has to satisfy flood insurance.
Right, and which means. All the utilities have to be up above the, the mean low, and there's a lot of stuff that goes on with it, lot of stuff.
So how, how far, how far is this house gonna go towards the curb, and how far to the back, 'cause I'm on the other side of it.
Actually.
It needs to be a little bit higher, it needs ten-foot setback, it needs a higher dimensional regulation. The lead water.
Twenty-nine feet off the street, is that it?
Oh, yeah, but she's in the back.
Were you, were you asking off the back property line, or off the street? Off the back property line, it's, uh.
Probably fifteen.
Probably somewhere around fifteen, sixteen feet?
Do you see it?
There's not a dimension there to the map.
I only got this one.
Is that this one there? No, 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 all right, so here it is, there, you can have, you can have that.
All right, thank you.
Is that it, anybody else in opposition? Seeing that there's none, I'm gonna close it for those in opposition. What is the wish of the board? Like I said, I will make a motion to continue, um, till the second meeting next month, is that okay with you guys? Till the second meeting next month, pending you guys come back with some sort of design.
You gotta get four votes.
So.
You gotta get four votes in the chamber.
You've kinda heard the opposition, you've heard what we've said, so it's not that you can't do anything, just, just come back with something reasonable. Is there a second to that?
Yeah.
Second. Second, so motion made by the chair, seconded by Mr. Wood, call the roll.
Yes.